Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Mayor and Council for the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is May 9th, 2018, 8:05 PM. They called the meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
Fledger allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for members of our community who passed away since our last meeting. And I'll list them. Lillian Fair, who died on her 100th birthday. Ioli, better known as Lee Kobicki. And Nancy Milne, she's a former planning board secretary. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, head the roll call, please.
Mayor Kranjak.
Here.
Councilperson Zavarsa.
Here.
E. Park.
Here.
O. Here.
McMorro.
Here.
M. Park.
Here.
Woe, Borough Attorney.
Present.
Superintendent of DPW, Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act Statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the Municipal Clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the Municipal Clerk.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to welcome James Verberio. He's our new Borough Administrator. He started yesterday. He'll be joining us at meetings in the future. We've spent the last few days bringing him up to speed on all the things that he needs to work on with us. I also wanted to mention, and first I want to thank everyone who donated. We have a public service project out in the hallway. It's collecting food donations for the Office of Concern in Englewood to help the needier of our community. I appreciate anyone and everyone who's donated. I think we can do better. I encourage people to do better. The basket will be out there all evening and tomorrow morning. If you don't have food, we could have cash donations accepted as well. And you can just give those to Liza, and she'll get those to the Office of Concern when they pick up tomorrow. So let's just try to do a little better, guys. The next thing I want to talk about is the proclamation for the Holocaust remembrance. Last month, we had a proclamation for the Armenian genocide. And the proclamation for the Holocaust, it changes every year, and no one reminded me at the last meeting when it was this year. So it kind of floats with lunar holidays that precede it. So let me just read it into the record so everybody could reflect on it. Days of remembrance, April 12th through April 19th, 2018, to the proclamation. Whereas the Holocaust was a tragedy of proportions the world had never before witnessed, and whereas more than 70 years have passed since the tragic events we now refer to as the Holocaust transpired, in which the dictatorship of Nazi Germany murdered 6 million Jews as part of a systemic program of genocide. And whereas Jews were the primary victims, but unfortunately, they were not alone. 5 million other people were murdered in Nazi concentration camps as part of a carefully orchestrated, state-sponsored program of cultural, social, and political annihilation under the Nazi tyranny. And whereas we must recognize the heroism of those who provided assistance to the victims of the Nazi regime, including the many soldiers who liberated concentration camps and provided comfort to those suffering. And whereas we must teach our children and future generations that the individual and communal acts of heroism during the Holocaust serve as a powerful example of how our nation and its citizens can and must respond to acts of hatred and inhumanity. And whereas we must always remind ourselves of the horrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, lest these atrocities be repeated. And whereas we, the people of Englewood Cliffs, should actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of human rights, individual freedom, and equal protection under the laws of a just and democratic society. And whereas each person in Englewood Cliffs should set aside a moment of his or her time every year to give remembrance to those who lost their lives in the Holocaust. And whereas the United States Holocaust Memorial Council recognizes the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust, including the days of remembrance known as Yom Hashoah. And whereas, according to Eli Weiselman, a Holocaust survivor and nationally-recognized scholar, a memorial unresponsive to the future would violate the memory of the past. Now therefore, I, Mario M. Kranjak, Mayor of Englewood Cliffs, do hereby proclaim April 12th, 2018, as Englewood Cliffs Holocaust Memorial Day, and that we are urged to observe this day of remembrance for victims of the Holocaust in an appropriate manner. So please reflect and remember. Thank you. We should call out and thank the Shade Tree Commission. We have, and under the leadership of Lauren Eastwood and Maria Valari, we have attained Tree City USA achievement for the 37th consecutive year. We are looking great out there with our trees. They're finally blooming. It seems like it all came at once this year. It took long enough. Okay, so I had given an assignment to the students at their student government day here in February. I gave them until the end of April to give me some recommendations for how to make Englewood Cliffs the best town in New Jersey. The recommendations came in on time, I'm happy to say. Some were typed, some were handwritten. Dependfulness was very good. I'm going through them now, and I'm going to summarize those for you at the next meeting. Some of the points were quite prescient and important, so we'll discuss those next meeting. The next item up, I wanted to have our Borough Council to say a few words about some legal matters, litigation matters.
Yes.
Any other legal matter you want to talk about?
Yes. I don't want to talk about legal matters. I want to talk about items that are on the agenda. I know there's been a recent correspondence that was sent to the Mayor and Council late this afternoon.
Late?
Oh, sorry. That was sent late this afternoon. I do want to point out that there are five or six or seven items of correspondence. They are correspondences received by the Mayor and Council. I checked with our Borough Clerk as to what her habit has been as to putting things like this on. And when someone writes, and it's to the Mayor and Council, it generally comes on here. What I am asking the Council members is not to discuss any of the items that are on here, other than perhaps the very last item, which was with the Governor's invitation. All of these items have issues with them that are, may constitute investigations, et cetera. So if members of the public address the Council on requesting and basically directing you that you should not respond with respect to these items. I know you know the contents. They may or may not be operable, and they're not things that Lizette and I have looked at for Oprah. Therefore, please do not talk about them.
Could I please add something?
Yes.
That I did not receive a copy of the correspondence.
Okay, yes.
Which I usually do.
Uh huh.
None of it came to me.
Okay. And I think that it's a function of how these people write. I didn't get all of them either, so I'm certainly not privy to citizens' right to the Mayor and Council because they get their emails from the website, and that's the way it goes. In addition, we received a correspondence from an attorney for Chief Chiaffi. Again, it was addressed to the Mayor and Council. We didn't get that until very late today. I would caution and direct the Council not to speak about that. If you have questions, they can be addressed either to myself or to the Mayor, or I don't know if the Borough Administrator knows. But there were some misstatements or mischaracterizations in Mr. Gallantucci's letter. And the topic of that letter is not for open public meeting at this time. No rights notice has been given, and no hearings have been held. So I'd ask the Council to refrain from discussing that. In addition, I do want the Council to know in an open public forum that we have several disciplinary matters with the chief, one of which has, we started not too long ago. We are not going to undertake the final part of that hearing, which would have been deliberations because of the lawsuit filed by Lauren Eastwood versus DeBarrow and three of the Council members. The court now has before it the issues that can impact whether or not we could put that particular matter back on the agenda. Out of deference to the court, and at least through the hearing date, that matter will not come back on the agenda. The allegations in that lawsuit may extend beyond that particular one, but for that, for right now, we're not going to bring that second part of that matter before the Council in May or June. And I think that's it, Mayor. That's it. I have to just say that we do need to finish the topic that we discussed and close at the next meeting, perhaps, or earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I promised Mr. Neville, the head of our DPW, to get him out early. So if there's anything you'd like to add, we appreciate everything you guys are doing. I know last time we met, I mentioned my safety concern for Johnson Field and the driveway going up. So if you want, you can just grab a microphone and speak to us about that. And the safety concern was that the driveway was not blocked, so any vehicle can enter Correct. Into that park.
Yeah, so what we opted to do was put a barrier gate at the driveway of the field due to the safety of the public using it. It's a very busy place, as well as Public Works, police, fire, ambulance, anybody has to get in there.
Right.
For their purpose, really, only. We've had instances where we've had staff working, and they've been in the park and in the area, and they turn around, there's a car behind them. So they've instructed the car that it's not a service road or through a street or anything like that, and they've got some bags, and they have, you know, mistake. But a barrier gate would be safety for everybody. It would be closed only to our option to open for our vehicles.
Okay. And what would the cost of that be?
I think it was $1,360.
Okay. Appreciate that. Let's get that done as soon as we can. We'll try to appropriate for that. I actually saw somebody during a rainstorm drive up there so they could get out of their car with their dog, walk their dog, and get back in because it was raining, but they didn't want it too wet.
Okay.
We need to work on that. And then there's also a list of other municipal properties in town that Mark went through with me, and we're going to try to harden those assets as well.
As well. Other than that, all as well, Public Works, Mayor.
Thank you. If you can't put the air back on before you leave, thanks. And have a good night. Thank you for joining us. Thank everyone at the DPW for us as well. Thank you. So correspondence that we received. Number one, Michael McMorro, April 23rd, 2018, regarding Lieutenant James Tracy, police audio slash video. Student Government Representatives, April 27th, 2018, regarding making Englewood Cliffs the best town in New Jersey. Scott Muira, May 1st, 2018, requesting ECPD identification. Scott Muira, May 1st, 2018, regarding Alyssa Chaffee, public property. Scott Muira, May 1st, 2018, forwarding anonymous letter regarding resident Martin Geiger. Myself, May 3rd, 2018, response to Governor's invitation to salt signing. That's all for correspondence. By way of update on the budget, we've had about five or six budget workshops with our CFO and our auditor and without them. We've been looking at things very tightly this year. We're, as you know, we're engaged in some litigations that came out of the blue regarding affordable housing and some other things, which I won't get into details with. But suffice it to say that we're in need of funds to fight those, and we're going to continue fighting them vigorously, zealously, and in your best interest. The hours of work have really piled up on the budget this year, and we still need about another week of work to do that. We're focused right now on some expense items, some salary items, wage items, and also on how much of our surplus we will use. By way of background, when I became Mayor two years ago, we had, some people say $60,000. I say zero of surplus. Somebody else here said $200,000. Whatever that number was then, I seem to remember kind of a negative number because of a surprise I was given. So we went from that to having a surplus today of $1,840,000. And given that surplus, given our need to fight the wars that we're in, we will look to use some of that. Bearing in mind that the LG ratable will increase probably in 2020. That building is completed in 2019. As you saw, or as you can see, as you drive past, it's rising quickly now, once the excavation work is done. So we're hoping that they get it done very quickly. I've encouraged them to double their efforts to get it done this year so we can put it in the next year's budget. But most likely, it'll be in 2020. That's all I have to say on those items. What I'd like to do now is open to the public. Do you have a motion to open to the public, please?
Hold a second.
So on favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Wait for me to recognize you. And then come to the microphone. Just come in here and sit down, relax, and speak into that microphone or that one, whichever one you prefer. Actually, this one's better. And just state your name and address, okay? Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to address it, Mayor and Council. My name is Teneth Kobicki. I reside at 48 Marjory Terrace, Englewood Cliffs, since 1962. So I've been here a long time. I noticed in the flyer that was received, you're having a wet down on June 23rd between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00. 10 more years ago, you had another wet down on Trenenden Place, a piece of equipment, and fire departments and neighboring towns came, and they duelled with hoses, and we had a good time. My children were there, some of the grandkids. There was food, there was music. I took a lot of photographs. And when I came back, one in particular disturbed me because it showed a fireman who was evidently being blasted with water, but he went like this, and the water went straight up into the power lines on Trenenden Place. I thought that was kind of dangerous, so I spoke with PSENG, and I said, "What's the voltage in the top line that feeds the transformers?" Because you're getting 220 into your house, but it's from a transformer. The top line carries anywhere between 13,000 and 26,000 volts. So he went on to say, "Old installations are just a bare wire. New installations have insulation, but with the UVs of the sun, you can get a crack in the insulation." So had that happened, and water being a conductor, not an insulator, the power would have come down into the hose and electrocuted that fireman, and the children playing in the water, and anybody else, and then your first responders coming in would have been electrocuted. So my purpose here today is to say, have your wet down, have the music, have the food, enjoy yourself, but stay the hell away from the power lines, okay? And stay out of harm's way. So that's all I have to say.
So thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And again, my condolences, I figure it was. Anybody else wishing to be here?
Hello, Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman and Councilman. My name is David Anbarsonian. I live in the 33 Bayview Avenue. The reason I'm here today, I want to bring to your attention that lately, last couple of months, I've been harassed by the police department of Englewood Cliffs. Multiple times, policemen came to my door, knocked the door, and asked my wife to move the cars from the front of the house. And my wife asked him why. He told my wife that because of the 48-hour regulations. So it happened like four or five times. Then we realized they start marking my tires. Late incident was March 7th this year. Policeman came and was parked behind my, one of my cars, and my wife told me, "Somebody behind the car, go try to move your car." So I came out with my sleepers on. I came out, and policeman was sitting in his cruiser and was tinted windows. I didn't know what he was doing. Five minutes later, he drops the window. He tells me, "I'm riding the ticket." I said, "Can I move my car?" You know, he says to me, "Yes, but I already start riding the ticket." I said, "Then put the ticket in my windshield." I had to go inside and take certain items to first four keys to move my other car a little bit deeper in the driveway. So take that car, put it through another car. The moment I start going back to my house, and he run after me from the cruiser. He put his hand on his gun and screamed at me right when I was in front of my doorsteps. He run after me. He start screaming, "Get it back and move your car out of the street." My kids and my wife were staying right on the porch. My wife still very uncomfortable. My kids were scared. I told them, "I just want to put my clothes on and come down." He says, "No, move your car right now, otherwise I'm going to tow your car." I don't understand. This is the way most expensive police department in United, in the state of New Jersey get paid, and this is the way we have to be treated? I work very hard. I do everything. I do my best to live in this town. It's not easy in these days to make it happen. My wife is a housewife. My kids are babies. My daughter was asking me, "Why that man run after you? What he wants to, what he wanted from you, Dad? I don't want to live like this. Mr. Mayor, I want you to really look into this. This is not right. I'm from Soviet Union. I lived in a communism regime. I don't want to live in communism regime now." When I asked that officer who knocked my doors and asked my wife to move the car, I don't remember his name, I told him, "Why only I been bothered? I have documented pictures of other cars parked front of my car. Many pictures I have. Nobody was marked tires. Nobody was bothered with that except me. I have a reason." I think, this is what I'm thinking. I support one of them, the persons here in this panel. When it's, I'm very active in politically, and I put certain signs on my lawn, and that's the biggest reason, probably, they after me. I have no other way to look at this. This is exactly why they doing this. Nobody deserves that. I didn't deserve that. I think this is free country. If I want to put the Mr. Bruce name on my lawn, I'm going to do that. If I want to do Mr. Versa, I'm going to do that. Nobody going to push me while I'm doing this. This is wrong. My wife is scared. She says to me, "David, what's going on?" I didn't deserve, nobody deserved this. Now I come to fight that ticket, which is he didn't even put properly that ticket. He put a totally different, wrong, wrong codes he put on the ticket. And this guy's making over $90,000 a year, and this is the way we get treated? I think it's need some looking to this.
So we will take everything you've said and relay it where we need to relay it.
Yes, sir.
And I hope to resolve this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question.
Yes.
You live at 33 Bayview Avenue.
Yes.
Don't you have a resident parking ticket?
Resident parking? My car is registered. Nobody has.
I'm confused. I'm not understanding why you have to move your car if you live in town.
It's, oh.
Why do you have to move your car?
It told me.
You live in the town.
It was, it, no.
Right? I'm just asking. We all have.
The last one, last one was the, like, snow was coming, but it was a snowy. But there was not even one inch of snow. So I look at it, I spoke to my attorney. We look at it, we go, "You too. We shouldn't do what he did. Even if it's a, we threw the snow there. Go ahead, tow my car. Don't come after me with the gun. You want to tow my car? Tow my car. Don't come after me with the gun and follow my kids and my wife."
Okay.
That's the reason he told me he killed.
Okay, was there a gun involved?
I'm sorry?
You're saying there was a gun involved?
His hand was on the gun. Gun was in the holster. My kids and my wife saw that. He didn't pull out, but his hand was on the gun. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Mr. Kobicki, I want to talk to the Fire Chief tomorrow about what you said. I meant to mention that before also. I will talk to him tomorrow.
There are photographs in your archive that I addressed when that happened years ago.
Okay. Yeah.
There was, it was right off.
I will make sure we mention it to him. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Good evening, panel. My name is David Seavon. I'm from 129 Hollywood Avenue. Been here for close to 50 years. We're in the year 2018 now. We're in a completely different eyesight of the '70s and the '80s. Something really strange happened last Wednesday night, anywhere from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. There was a burglary next to my house. And I'm taking it really, really serious. And I'm not playing around with it. I'm taking this really, really serious. Vision as a mayor and you people is very important in this town. Because I don't think any of yous are getting that we have over 100 illegal aliens in this town running around every day in our backyards, mowing lawns, landscaping, and I'm not prejudiced, anywhere from Guatemala, Costa Rica, Mexico, Salvador, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I came to your house on Sunday, Mayor, and I asked you, "What are you going to do about this problem?" Your question to me was that two police officers having lunch at the same time. This is not a police matter. This is an administration problem that we're letting every landscaper that's not registered in this town to come in here and mow these lawns and be in our backyards. We don't know who Juan Gonzalez is, Pedro Hachís is. We don't know none of these people. Yet they're in our backyards, mowing the lawns, and looking at everything that we own, our wealth, our everything. And what happens next? The house gets burglarized next to me. "Oh, yeah, that guy came from out of town." Oh, no. That's not from somebody out of town, my friend. That's a landscaper that broke into that house. That's an employee, okay? I've been burglarized my whole life buying and selling these cars at my place. I know what burglaries are. House being built, I believe, in 6 South Virginia. No fence around the property whatsoever, okay? And that should be another code in this town that when a house gets built, a brand-new house gets built, a six-foot fence has got to be put around the entirety of the house because that house on 6 South Virginia does not have a garage door on it. It doesn't have a door to get in the house. Anybody could get in the house. And that house on South Virginia, I bet you in my life, somebody was in that house waiting for nobody to be on 131 Hollywood, and that's when the break-in started. And that's when the break-in started. You got a new administrator. He's gotta put enforcement on this problem. And having all these illegal aliens coming into this house in your backyard and my backyard and mowing these lawns. We gotta have every one of these landscapers registered that are coming into this town. They're all under Alano's. Every illegal alien there is. And you see it every day. I see it every day. And I picked up this problem. Because what do they got to lose if they break into a house and run away? They're gonna go hide, get, get a job in another, uh, town in New Jersey. You understand? These guys are running around like rats, making sixty dollars, fifty dollars, eighty dollars a day. Yeah.
Can I, uh?
You're bringing up some good points.
Yeah, I am bringing up some good points.
Okay. I, I just need to clarify for you. Um, we, we can't make assumptions about people. Okay?
What if we can?
No, you can't. Our, our landscapers are all registered with the borough.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, they all have to comply with the Patriot Act and, and all the employment laws. Okay? Let me just finish and then you can add. Uh, a letter is sent out at the beginning of the year to all landscapers that work in Englewood Cliffs. Uh, they're required to come register with their Department of Consumer Affairs card issued by the state. Um, and if they don't have one, they have to pay a hundred fifty-dollar fine, fifty-dollar fine. But I'll also tell you that the danger of making broad, rushed assumptions about people is something I've said before. Remember this? You were sitting there. We, the people of Englewood Cliffs should actively, we dedicate ourselves to the principles of human rights, individual freedom, and equal protection under the laws of a just and democratic society.
A three-year-old baby living in that house.
We need to make.
With a guy coming with a box cutter and cutting the, the, the screen in the basement and getting in the house.
I understand.
A three-year-old baby. I'm not gonna listen to any, none of that crap that you're just telling me.
I, I understand that.
I'm not gonna listen to it at all.
But we're not here to judge people.
I got a three-year-old baby, my next-door neighbor. How would you like that box cutter to be at a throat?
Okay. We, we cannot make assumptions about people without having proof.
I wanna know.
We've asked the police department.
I wanna know if that guy's registered that was mowing that lawn on 131 Hollywood Avenue. Because if he wasn't, he's gotta get fined. That's where your new administrator is in this town. He's gotta get fined.
And that's a fair point. And that was what they.
He's gotta get fined. And every one of those people that are working for him have gotta get interviewed.
Mister Sevan?
I'm very, I'm very livid over this.
Who's the landscaper?
I mean, I, I, I don't know. Now tomorrow at ten o'clock, I got somebody coming to my house to put cameras all around my house after fifty years. I don't need this aggravation. A burglary next door to my house? A box cutter? Why don't you walk in, why don't you walk in the back of the 131 Hollywood Avenue and see that screen cup with a box cutter or a knife? You go back there and take a look at that. You got pictures in the police department? You know? They'll show you everything.
I, I understand that.
But you know the feeling.
That's an active investigation. Everybody wants safe communities. And we all strive for that. And our police department is working to do that.
I'll tell you one thing. I ever see anybody around my area, okay? I ever see anybody like that around my area in my backyard, walking around, creeping around in a neighbor's backyard? It's not gonna be a pleasant experience. That's all I can tell you. Police department and all police department, I'm gonna handle it on my own. And it's not gonna be a pleasant experience. That's all I gotta tell you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else?
Lynn Norton, Nine Mill Drive. This is just very quick. Mayor, next time you make a statement about surplus, please don't make such an incorrect one. That can, that can easily be checked. There was a million, eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-one cents left over at the end of December 31st, 2015. You and your budget.
I believe that was capital surplus.
No, I don't believe it was. You and your budget used nine hundred and ten thousand towards, uh, the 2016 year. So please check your facts before you make statements.
Anybody else? Capital is different than regular surplus.
Mr. Moe, did you have something to come up and speak about? Oh, I thought you were standing up. Okay.
John Lauria, I live at Two Leighton Street in Englewood Cliffs. Lived here all my life. I'd just like to know if the mayor and council is gonna do anything about the deer situation. I had damage to my property last year. Uh, I understand Englewood is trying to do something about it. What's Englewood Cliffs doing about it? I got my one tree, it's a town tree. Come down and look at it. Mrs. Eastwood took a pitch of it, ate the whole bark right off the tree.
So I met with the, uh, the people who run the preserve in Englewood, Flat Rock Preserve. And I, I asked them to let deer back in, 'cause they blocked them from coming out. And Mrs. O'Shea pointed that out last year to us. I actually went down there and met with them. And they're trying to, uh, restart their forest of indigenous trees because they were being taken over by non-indigenous trees. And, uh, they actually offered to come in and speak to us about it. We, uh, we're very limited in what we can do. I, I saw a deer the other day with three legs. Call the police department, see if they, we could help the deer.
It was three, three there last night. And my friend, Yod.
I saw five the other night with my wife.
I mean, the town has a few bucks. Maybe they can start doing some spraying or something. I understand that these gardeners do it. We're spending money all over the place here in town. So let's start taking care of the properties.
Well, we'll look into that. But, um, I'm, I'm not a big fan of spraying toxic chemicals on people's lawns. So, uh.
Is the town gonna give, give me another tree? Another, another tree? Or the neighbor caused the tree, you, you, shrubs, there, there's a disaster?
We're all incurring this. And I asked the, um, preserve people and the wildlife people if it was possible to relocate the deer. And they said, "No, can't do that." Um, they, they've tried a few different things. It's not working. You're right. There is a problem. But, um, I'm not a wildlife expert. And, um, I guess what we could do is call up the, uh, the animal protection people and see what they do to wildlife people. Thank you.
Am I, am I gonna hear, hear from you or just?
Well, we'll mention your tree again to our shade tree commissioner.
Oh, she's been there. She's been there already. She knows all about it.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. I had spoken regarding this at a, uh, one of the intermediate budget meetings, but I really felt I needed to say it again. In lieu of the recent events that happened with the Port Authority Commissioner in Tenafly, there was a lot of news coverage on it on all the national networks and all local papers how she tried to use her position to, um, have the police not tow the car that her daughter was riding in. And, um, the Tenafly police were very patient with her and they were commended for their actions and their calm demeanor. But it reminds me also of Zalima Farber, who tried to have her boyfriend not get a ticket in Fairview. And subsequently, uh, she lost her position with the state. And the woman in the Port Authority lost her position, had to resign. And we have a situation here where, um, Senator Loretta Weinberg was contacted to intervene, uh, through the Burton County Prosecutor's Office, um, regarding Chief Chiaffi. Now, I think Loretta Weinberg should be held to the same standard as Zalima Farber or, uh, as the woman from Tenafly that was the Port Authority Commission. And I think that whoever it was that asked her to intervene should also resign their position if they have one. Because, uh, that's stepping outside the bounds, outside the rules, outside the lines that we're supposed to operate in. And, uh, that, that shouldn't be. You know, if, if something goes to a higher court, a higher, uh, authority for determination, uh, political interference shouldn't play into it. And I think that, uh, the mayor and council of Englewood Cliffs should send a letter to the state senate and ask that, uh, Loretta Weinberg be chastised or criticized on this. And also send a letter to the prosecutor's office and say how disappointed we are that they even took the call. Okay?
Uh, thank you. I agree with you on all counts. I believe in equal protection and equal application of all laws to everyone, no matter who you are or who you think you are.
Correct.
Or who you wanna be, as aspirational as that might sound.
Everybody should be treated on the same even playing field.
The letter will go.
Okay. Thank you. And then regarding, uh, what, uh, John Lauria said about the deer is absolutely right. I mean, Irving Avenue never saw deer. I see five deer at a time, um, in the lots across, behind the new restaurant that's going on, Sylvan Avenue. I see them cutting through the yards, um, go across Summit Street and down Hickory Street. Oh, my God, to Charlotte Place. You know, there's deer all over. And, um, it's, it's dangerous. It's dangerous because they dart out. And very often when one darts, you might miss that one, but there's always someone coming right back to them.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, it's, it's a safety hazard. So I, I think.
I appreciate that. I was actually told that it was unlawful to relocate them.
I believe, 'cause you can't really catch them. But they do have feed, that they can feed them, that will sterilize them. You know, make them not productive to produce more deer. You know? That's, that's the only thing that they can do. So maybe they should do that.
Anybody else?
Deborah Sabar, 106 Hollywood. I noticed that we made some changes to ordinance 1810. Um, I couldn't remember. I don't have it in front of me. I, I see that we now have three captains. And I'm just wondering, I guess that was changed because of Murrah.
It's up to.
Up to. Three captains. Um, is it our intention to have three captains?
Our intention is to not speak about people who haven't been arised to are employed. However, I can say that as long as.
I'm asking if we, our intention is to have three captains.
Fine. I won't answer your question.
That's it.
I won't answer your question. You interrupt.
Okay. I'm just, what I'd like to know is if Lieutenant.
You're going to know if you let me answer. Do you wanna let me answer?
My question.
Do you wanna let me answer?
You can answer the question that you think I'm asking. Go ahead.
Right. We are going to have three until Officer Captain Murrah retires.
Okay.
And his retirement papers are in. Does that answer your question?
So that's my, no. My question is then.
And then we are going to eliminate that position.
Do we now have?
And then we are going.
Lieutenant Murrah is still on our payroll?
And then we are going to eliminate that position once he retires.
I understand that. I'm asking you if he's still on our payroll right now.
He is.
Are we still in litigation with Lieutenant Murrah? Or has that been finalized?
Lieutenant Murrah returning to speak on any litigation matters.
We are still in litigation.
We are still in litigation.
Okay. I, I thought that was settled and that he wasn't going to be working for this town at a meeting that I attended where you all voted on that.
We don't control the state's decisions when it comes to pensions. And, and their decision was that it had to be done over. And that's where we're going. Right?
Okay. So then, so basically that, that was reversed then? So whatever agreement you had is no longer?
No. It's not reversed.
No, no. But we're still paying him? And it's on here that he sends a letter to get his identification.
Okay. So, so, so let me just speak. And, and with respect to, um, the Scott Moore letter that he wanted his.
You can't speak on it.
On his behalf. I'm not talking about any of those other letters. Uh, the chief is, is, let me know that he's not entitled to have a ECPD ID or whatever else he asked for. But upon retirement, he will get a retired police officer's badge. But right now, he has no badge. He has no, no gun. He, uh, doesn't have a locker. He's in, on inactive status. There was a court order. It, that was the litigation where they sought to enforce certain provisions. And the court order was entered that he get paid, that he be on the payroll.
Okay. So he's still on our payroll?
So he's on our payroll per this court order. But that didn't take away from the settlement agreement. In, under the settlement agreement, a disability application is filed. It needs, I didn't handle that part of it. It was right after, uh, we did settle it. And we certainly expect that that disability is going to continue to be prosecuted. And I, now that Catherine is no longer here, I assume that I will work, I will, I'm going to step up and try to work to get that disability application finished so that Mister Moore can retire.
Okay. So we did, but we don't know how long that can take.
No, but it should not have taken as long as it did. And because there, there's a dispute as to whether it was Moore, uh, or the Boggs.
That's okay. I'm, I'm not just, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the issue.
All right.
I'm saying we still have money that we have to pay in our budget for this police officer who's not working.
The answer is yes.
Yes, the answer is yes.
We need to keep that in mind.
But you also do, should understand that when the pension is approved, and I assume it will be, it backdates to October 1st. And there is a portion of the, the pension monies that will reimburse what salary he is paid.
But the answer to my question is yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's the answer to my question.
But I mean, you know, obviously, uh, he can't double-dip. Right?
Anybody else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Russell Perino, 220 Fairview Avenue. Uh, two quick things I'd like to address. One is, uh, the buffer lack there are between Hudson Terrace and the Palisades Interstate Parkway, specifically in the Bayview Avenue area. Anyone that drives by there, in the winter especially, it's completely, um, uh, without any, uh, screening between, uh, the folks that live on either Hudson Terrace or in Bayview looking towards the gas station, which is what they're seeing now is people pumping gas, uh, which was never the case. I appeared before this governing body probably seven or eight years ago. Lizette, maybe you were here. And I talked about the issue of overgrowth, um, of the vegetation that grew into the shoulder of, of Hudson Terrace. And it affected me and other folks that like to ride bikes along Hudson Terrace. So we ended up, looked like, what I think happened was Burton County maybe was notified because of my complaint or someone else's. And they've since been spraying Roundup, it appears, up and down the entire length of Hudson Terrace from one border of our town to the other. Killing literally everything that's green from the fence that separates the parkway from Hudson Terrace to the street. Actually, it goes even onto the west side of Hudson Terrace. Uh, the point is they've since now killed, you know, any vegetation that was providing that buffer, at least of the view shed towards the, the gas station. So now you've got a clear, you know, view, which didn't happen before. So I'm asking, I guess, for two things. One is let the county be, uh, asked to stop applying the Roundup or whatever weed killer they're using, which is, I think, everyone agrees it's harmful and shouldn't be sprayed in the first place. And 'cause it's also going to be killing the vegetation on the other side of the fence, which is a Palisades Parkway property. You're right, these insecticides don't stop at the place where they're sprayed. They tend to migrate off. Um, secondly, if there couldn't be some sort of a screen installed, I may be dealing with the Palisades Parkway Commission and the County of Bergen, you know, uh, and a fence that separates those two properties. I'm not sure who the authority would be. You know, would one of them or both of them, you know, provide, uh, you know, a screen, a PVC fence or something like that, at least sixty tall? Uh, encourage maybe some planting and some, some screening there. I encourage maybe some planting and some screening there, so in the future that, those folks that live in that part of town are not looking at, you know, folks pumping their gas. That was never an issue before. I think it's really a matter of the county spraying that Roundup and killing whatever vegetation there was. I'm not saying they were beautiful trees.
No, everything goes from green to brown.
Yeah.
Like overnight.
Yeah. So that was the one item. And the second one is I want to thank both the mayor and council president for authoring that letter that went out to the residents of Englewood Cliffs last week. I think it begins to set the record straight in terms of the part that the planning board has played and will continue to play in our affordable housing litigation, vis-à-vis the planning board, vis-à-vis the governing body. You know, so a lot of things were said early on by residents of the town condemning the members of this board, and I think the institution of the planning board. And I think it's important that, that there'll be a continuing dialogue so that the residents know when appropriate, so that it's not affecting legal strategies, hey, here's what happened and here's what's happening now, and here's what, you know, we hope to happen in the future. And I know you're limited, as we are, about speaking about the specifics, but I thank you for recognizing the part that we played and will continue to play in this matter.
You're welcome. And while I doubt very much the misguided residents who did speak out against you and their board will ever apologize to you, just know that we thank you, because you guys did a great job. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Just to, there's a little, in that fence, I know exactly the area that you're talking about, it's very bare.
And there's a gate there.
There's a gate.
And the folks, the employees that work there traverse back and forth, which is fine, but if a privacy fence was installed, clearly a gate could be installed in there too. Which should be closed-
Yeah, the mayor's, it's okay, I'll call.
Even for safety reasons, that gate should be, you know, kept locked so children couldn't end up on the parkway by accident. Thanks.
Thank you.
The gate should be locked, the gate's going on.
Yes.
I, you know what, I was only going to come up here and tell you about Arbor Day, which has been scheduled-
Thank you, I forgot to say that.
Thank you. It's scheduled for May 21, and we really could use some volunteers, anybody up there who wants to come and help us, okay? I also wanted to say thank you on the update that I received about 800 Sylvan Avenue. It was really refreshing to see what actually has been happening, and I hope that most of the residents do read that and understand what happened there. So I want to thank you for that.
Thanks.
You know what, there's so many people spoke tonight, and I really wanted to, I feel so bad about the deer, I'm an animal lover, and I don't mind having the deer eat my shrubbery, I really don't.
Okay, that's all of your house.
So bring them on, bring them over, I don't care. Absolutely, you know what, we really should look at where the problem is. It isn't just Englewood, it is all the building that's going on on 9W. We put no restrictions on how much trees and land they take away from the animals, and it really isn't fair to them. You know, we're human, and God created all of us, not just us, but also every creature that roams around. And the reason why we have deer tick is because they had to come out of the woods and come into our neighborhoods, and now our dogs have deer issues, and people are getting the disease, and, you know what, it's a bigger issue than just our shrubbery. So it would be really nice if as humans, we would consider other living things on this earth other than ourselves. Okay, so that, and I don't believe in euthanizing animals just because the population has too much, you know, there should be a different solution for them. The gentleman that spoke, what street are you on?
Hollywood.
On Hollywood. You know, I understand what he's saying, I think, if you watch a lot of prime TV the way I do, you know that a lot of, a lot of time occurs from people actually being familiar with your property. That being said though, we don't know who's working for the landscapers who legally have their licenses to work on our properties. So, you know, I don't even know where you would start with that. Maybe documentation on workers or something like that, but that's an issue, having strangers looking in your windows, watching when you come in, when you go out, what you're, you know, what you're doing. So I really feel for that, but I think it's a bigger issue than just landscaper, because a landscaper can come in and say, hey, I want to cut, you know, Mrs. Duffy's grass, I want a certificate that I can do that. And then he goes in Palisades Park and picks up five undocumented workers, and there you have. So how do you, how do you solve that? That's a big issue and maybe something to be looked in. I am horrified at what happened with the gentleman with the parked cars. I've been saying this for a long time, we are all residents, all of us are residents of this town, whether we are Democrats, independents, Republicans, whatever, we should all be treated equally regardless of that political affiliation. And I feel really bad that if that is some kind of retaliation against this gentleman, because that is a real crime in itself. And you know what, I love the police. They protect us. If I have an issue, I call the police. But I also want to feel safe with that police. I don't think any police officer should put their hand on a gun for a parked car. End of story. Okay? That's it. I really want to express to you my outrage about the Senator Majority Leader Loretta Weinberg to interfere with anything going on in this town. I don't think anybody should flex their muscle and their political, whatever they have, to try to interfere with some issues that are going in our town when it comes to Chief Chaffee or any other matter, doesn't have to be Chief Chaffee, anything that's going on, no one should interfere with our government and what goes on in our town. I'm not sure who else, I, I'm not 100% sure, but I heard that a member from our council actually also reached out to the prosecutor. I don't want to say her name because I don't want to get it wrong and I don't want to scream that. I think that's a real crime, and whoever did that has to recuse themselves when it comes to police. Because when you are going to independently make a phone call to the prosecutor to try to help out whoever it is, is wrong. And that person should not be allowed to vote on police matters. Also, those handouts that we handed out at the last meeting, oh my God. In today's day with all this, everybody's being accused of sexual harassment and beating women and using their power to whatever, to see what is being emailed amongst our police officers, donuts with, you know what, I don't even want to say. I mean, that's, you know, we're, our elected people should be held to a higher standard. I remember when President Clinton was accused by Monica Lewinsky, there were a lot of people defending him. She's an adult, he has a right to do whatever he wants, he's the president and, you know, he's a man, whatever. And I would always say that the President of the United States, like a chief of police, like a governor, like a senator, like anybody in a high position of power in Hollywood, anywhere, they should be held to a higher standard, because they are the ones that are making those decisions. Well, it's okay. They don't want to hear what I have to say.
People in the corner, can you just not speak here, go outside if you have to have a conversation or talk about the president or whoever, it's fine.
Right. So all I'm trying to say is, we need to have, you know, everybody's screaming about Me Too, but these women that are speaking out there, they're okay with that, because it's okay with them.
Yeah, they're concerned about Scott Moore retiring. No one wants to talk about the big elephant in the room.
Right, so we, as women, we do stick together over and, we're not Democrat women and Republican women, so the Republican women don't matter, the Democrat women matter. We're all women, and we should stick together, and I hate when women don't stand up for other women. Thank you.
Well, you said something interesting, which is a higher standard. It's the same standard for everyone. Everyone should conduct themselves in a professional, responsible manner, no matter who you are or who you aspire to be, and I appreciate your comments, thank you. And just because we're going to, at some point, have this issue come up, it was Loretta Weinberg and Ellen Park, okay? Those are the two people.
Okay, I thought, I thought that was the name, but I didn't want to say it.
Well, in the interest of transparency, which is what I'm doing, that's who did it.
Well, having heard that right now, Ellen, you should recuse yourself from police, because you have shown yourself to be partial to your decision-making. Thank you.
Kevin motion to close the public portion, I don't see any other hands.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, payment of claims, resolution 18-102, April 12, 2018 through May 9, 2018. The claims paid, the claims paid were $4,136,662.28.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes.
I'm just going to wait for people to stop talking.
Okay, well, let's reassess a few minutes while everybody who wants to leave can leave without making a lot of noise. All right, let's get back on the record here, go ahead. There's a point of order, Councilman McMorro?
Mayor, I just need to, at this point, put this on the record. Every month-
Hold on, hold on. All right, everybody out in the foyer, you're welcome to come in here, sit down, join us, or leave the foyer if you're going to have a conversation, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we almost would not be able to be paying our claims, because as we have happened almost every month, I cannot get two council members to come to sign bills. I need to explain to you-
And you're not even the finance chair.
And I'm not even the finance chair, but I do worry about paying our bills, because our employees do need to get paid, and the vendors need to get paid, and everything needs to keep moving. I thank Councilwoman Wu for dropping everything, and I apologize, I'm not, I don't mean to put anybody else on the spot here. I don't think you understand the importance of what your roles are as council people. You have to sign bills. You have to come in and look at the vouchers, you can't just read the bill list. You have a fiduciary duty to, excuse me, you have a fiduciary duty to make sure that the goods were provided on the vouchers that you're signing for, and you cannot understand what the goods are by reading a bill list. I'm not going to say this again, I made a speech last year, I've been, I've been doing everything possible to make every one of your jobs easier and bringing the vouchers to the council meetings, which should not happen. Today, Janice Romano informed me that no longer will those vouchers be allowed to leave her office. It will not happen. At 4 o'clock on the Wednesday of the council meeting, her door will be locked. If there is no second signature, the bills will not be paid. And anyone who didn't come, other than me, I'm always there to sign, every meeting, there's a signature from me. Come on, there's five of you. The only one that, I mean, it's just, we're adults, I don't want to have to say this again. She called me today, she came up to the administrator and said, I'm not allowing it anymore. The door is locked at 4 o'clock, they're there from Tuesday morning.
Okay, let's, let's try to do better. To have a motion to approve the claims paid?
So move.
Kevin, welcome.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Well, you know what?
Resolutions 103, approve Rappel license of Sister of St., Sister, I'm sorry, Sisters of St. Joseph of Peace. Motion and a second?
So move.
Second. Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
104, authorization to enter into agreement with Riverside Cooperative.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
105, authorized tax settlement of block 708, Lot 4, 30 Booth Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Dan.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
106, authorized tax settlement of block 617, Lot 15, 530 Sylvan Avenue.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Dan.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
107, approving addendum to DPW contract with Local 97 for split of form and position.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
108, authorization to extend not to exceed for NASA Capital Advisors LLC.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
109, authorization to exceed not to extend for, not, I'm sorry, authorization to extend not to exceed for Jeffrey Arserining and Associates LLC.
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
110, authorization to extend not to exceed and final payment to Methessel and Warble PC. Point of order?
Hmm?
Mayor?
Yeah, I think the vote.
Yes, point of order?
I just have a question. So this is just for this litigation, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
All right, next up on our agenda is a public hearing for ordinance 18-7, an ordinance amending the code of the borough of Englewood Cliffs, Chapter 2-13, entitled Police Department to Establish Promotional Procedures for Position of Chief of Police. This is the public hearing that was introduced at their last meeting. To have a motion to open to the public.
So move, second.
Does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard just on that ordinance, 18-7, please raise your hand, wait for me to recognize you, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Yes?
I'm a bit confused by this ordinance. It seems to me there are two things that concern me. One, it says you're establishing promotional procedures for the promotion, for the position of chief of police. Isn't your intention, when you set up an ordinance, to preclude the council from ever looking outside the police department?
We ask that question of our labor council, and by law, we are not permitted to go outside of the department for the chief of police position.
Okay. All right, now, second question. About two years ago, I sat at a mayor and council meeting, and there was concern and discussion about establishing the requirements for patrolmen. And that discussion limited a hire for a new patrolman to someone who has a college degree. So here you're setting up a procedure where all of a sudden you're saying that the chief of police doesn't have to have a college degree, that four years of military service is sufficient. That seems to be a position that's not consistent with what you're requiring of your entry level policeman.
Actually, it's four years military service with honorable discharge, and it does actually follow the path of logic, and hear me out. We have police officers who are hired before we change the hiring policy for patrol officers, and some of them don't have college degrees, but they do have four- don't have college degrees, but they do have four years of military service. And that was brought to my attention, um, a few months ago, and I'm glad it was, because I didn't want to preclude, uh, officers who would otherwise be good candidates to be our chief, um, from applying because they didn't have a college degree. Now, going forward, yes, all patrol officers will have college degrees.
Okay, let me finish, please. Thank you, thank you for explaining that. But going one step forward, if you're going to enlarge your pool to include people who have military service with an honorary discharge, why aren't you also enlarging it to other policemen who might have suitable experience in the department but might not have the college degree or the military service, but might have ten years or five years or whatever number you wanna set up of experience, um, in an honorable manner, however you wanna classify it, within our police department that might make them candidates? I don't know if anybody is precluded from the criteria, as you've now amended it in this ordinance. I don't know if there's anyone who doesn't have the college degree or the four years of military service with an honorable discharge. But if there is such a person, you're precluding them based on, you're precluding someone who might have exemplary service in the department itself, which to me speaks more than just the college degree or, uh, military service with an honorable discharge. So I would suggest that you reconsider, um, the qualifications and amend them to include, um, service of some number of years or some experience within the department and add that to your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard on that specific ordinance, eighteen dash seven? Seeing and hearing no one, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
So move.
One favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt, is that the right word here, adopt ordinance eighteen dash seven?
So move.
Second. Do I have a roll call vote?
All right, is Mark a second? Councilperson Zaverta?
Um, I had spoken last, I, I wish we would have put the language, may have received this bachelor's degree, um, but, um, I'm not gonna ask for it to be amended, but I'll vote now.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
No.
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay, it passes. What I wanna do is immediately start the process of finding our next chief of police. Next up is eighteen dash eight. This is an ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twelve, public safety director position. Do I have a motion to open to the public, please?
So move.
Second. One favor?
Aye.
Does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on eighteen dash eight, an ordinance repealing ordinance number two thousand seventeen dash twelve, please raise your hand. Be recognized by me. Come up, state your name and address, and only speak to that one ordinance, eighteen dash eight. Seeing and hearing no one, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
So move.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adopt eighteen dash eight?
So move.
Second.
Do I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Yes.
McMorro?
Abstained.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay, next is ordinance, um, first reading, uh, with a public hearing on June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Um, first ordinance is eighteen dash nine, an ordinance amending ordinance number seventeen dash zero nine, entitled An Ordinance Fixing Salaries and Wages and Compensation for All Salaryed, Appointed and Elected Officers Within the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen and the State of New Jersey for Borough Administrator. Do I have a motion, please?
Point of order?
Yes.
I have another question. Why do we need to amend this? Did we pass this already at the last meeting?
No, you were appointed at the last meeting. I'm sorry. I, I don't know if you were asking me. We have an ordinance now for the salary. You were appointed at the last, last.
I have a question, point of order?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, so has the, uh, the borough administrator, um, started already, or when is his starting date?
He started on Tuesday.
Okay, the real question that you're asking.
He's starting at the ninety-two thousand.
He's starting at the prior salary, the ordinance, and that's why we're amending it and we have to raise it. So, uh, if you're asking if it do anything wrong, no, he was hired at the existing salary.
So this is, um, what are we going up to?
I don't, it's, it's, it's... Started at ninety-five. All right, yeah. Yeah, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Passes on first. Ordinance eighteen ten, amending the code of the borough of Englewood Cliffs, regard to Police Department Table of Organization. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Do I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilperson Zaverta?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
McMorro?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
It passes.
All right, we had committee and council member reports up next. Does anybody wanna report on their committee? If so, state your name and committee. How about we do this? Councilwoman Zaverta?
Not the only one.
Councilwoman Park?
We didn't have a board of house meeting yet.
Councilwoman O. Uh, there was a rabies clinic last week.
I was gonna say, Ellen, you have a rabies clinic.
Uh, all right, no worries.
No worries. Um, Councilwoman McMorro?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got a couple of things. Okay, uh...
Where am I?
I wanted to update on, yeah, I just wanted to update on, uh...
Just waiting for you guys.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'd just like to remind the residents that we will be, uh, giving updates about what's happening, uh, with, with the COA litigation. I thank all the people that came up and were appreciative of what went out, and I would like to remind all of our residents to please, um, pay specific attention to literature that's going out with the borough letterhead on it. There are other, um, there are other mailings that are going out, and obviously, people are allowed to send out their opinions, but they are just that, they are opinions, and the only official correspondence would be with something that has the borough of Englewood Cliffs letterhead on it, and to please be aware of that and let your neighbors know that as well. Um, Mayor, I, I think it's important for, um, the residents, if I could just update them, um, on, uh, the Favaro-Simon litigation that I went to, um, the council is aware of the, uh, the consent order that was entered into. But I, I think it's really important what I witnessed at the courthouse. And I had to be there for seven and a half hours, uh, a week ago, Friday. And what was most troubling for me was to see, um, Carter Karsten Jr., I think he's junior, and I believe his clients, um, are Joseph Favaro and Melanie Simon, yet in the audience was Lynn Norton and Debbie Fair. And, um, every time we went into private session to speak, Carter Karsten Jr. did not only take his client, Melanie Simon, he also took Debbie Fair and Lynn Norton into the private attorney room to talk about whatever was going on in close session with the judge. So I, I do have questions about who the actual clients are. I do have questions as to who else was involved in this litigation against the borough and myself, and I would like to let the, uh, and the reason I'm letting the borough know this is that, as far as I'm concerned, they initiated privilege, and they gave up their rights to attorney-client privilege, and I look forward to finding out the information that was discussed with Ms. Fair, with Ms. Simon, and with Ms. Norton, and Carter Karsten Jr., because they are now all witnesses, uh, and could be witnesses to the many litigations that are now being held, especially if they had any conversations with any of the plaintiffs in those litigations against the borough or any other members of this council, because these litigations are costing the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money. There was a piece of information, Mayor, that, uh, Mr. Karsten Jr. seemed to have, that neither the borough attorney had, as a member of the council, I surely did not have. But he had it, and I found that quite troubling, how he could have information.
Troubling, but not surprising?
Well, it will all come out, Mayor, in deposition and in questioning, but that was that. And I'm gonna be asking the borough attorney again. I have asked, I will continue to ask. There are emails that have many members on these emails with correspondence out of the, um, federal, uh, litigation that the chief of police has with, um, there's Debbie, Debbie Sabari, who is now the new count, the candidate for the Democratic Party, who is also the writer of the, excuse me, excuse me.
You can't do that.
The public has a right to know.
Oh, 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 you're gonna have to leave if you do that.
The public has a right to know.
That's fine, she had, she's entitled to do that. You don't have the right to speak right now.
The public has a right to know.
Then you can leave if you don't like what you're hearing, okay?
The truth may hurt.
The truth may hurt.
The public has a right to know.
Okay.
Well, she's interrupting me, and she's gonna be asked to leave then. Okay?
All right.
Point of order? Members, I didn't finish. I will mention anybody's names that I'm receiving on correspondence that are not, that are public documents, okay, because they're...
Why don't you hand them out then?
Mayor?
All right, you know, let's, let's have a recess. We're gonna ask you to leave. Please leave.
No, she can't yell out.
No, just hold on. We're, we're in recess right now.
So she can stop mentioning my name?
No, no, you, you need to leave. You're, you're, you're not following the rules. Hey, put your hand down, we're not calling on you. Go ahead.
Mayor, I apologize.
On record.
It's not a public session. It's not a public session, I'm, I'm, this is...
All right.
And, and Mayor, I'm not...
Is that your next headline?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is, this is a matter of public concern because the, there are many litigations, and it's costing the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money, and they have a right to transparency, they have a right to know what's going on, and, you know, indirectly, they're all paying for it. And that's, that's my report, Mayor.
Uh, point of order?
And also, let me just, also, um, I would like to know, uh, on this council, and I would, Mayor, I will ask that you would please poll the council, who on this council, if anyone, called Loretta Weinberg and asked her to make any call to a prosecutor's office. I would, I'm asking, I'm making a motion to, if you need a motion, if not, I want this council polled and go right down the line. Did you call Loretta Weinberg and ask her to intervene in any matter on your behalf?
Okay, so that's, that's a voluntary, I don't...
They don't have to answer it, I want you to answer it.
I'll say, I'll say for myself, no.
I did not call Loretta Weinberg. Did you call Loretta Weinberg? Did you call Loretta Weinberg?
No.
Councilwoman Zaverta, did you call Loretta Weinberg?
You don't have to answer that question.
Um...
Excuse me, I have the floor. He already said it was me. He already announced it, the mayor, so, so now we have to take a poll? This is such drama. No, he didn't say that. He said it two minutes ago!
Loretta Weinberg?
No.
Please, who called her?
Oh, who called Loretta Weinberg?
I'm asking who called Loretta Weinberg.
Okay, all right, point of order. Are you done?
No, I'm not.
Are you done?
Did you call Loretta Weinberg?
Okay.
No, I didn't speak. Point of order.
Hold on a second, no, there's no point of order. We're doing reports. You had your chance.
Why is that important right now? Why don't you call her yourself, Carol? I think you already know the answer. Why did I call her?
Folks, stop, stop. The public expects better from us.
I just asked who called Loretta Weinberg.
You in the corner, you're gonna have to leave. You're gonna have to leave because you're calling out. Okay, we, we need to also, the example up here, okay, so no calling out. Are you done?
I, I have a question.
No, no, you had your chance, don't come down.
No, I have more questions. I'm intending to ask questions, but I'm, excuse me.
She's not gone.
No, on, on the same topic, I have a question to the borough attorney. I have a question to the borough attorney about the consent order that Carol is referring to.
You could hold your question. I told you we'd come back to you, 'cause right now, what we're doing is we're going down the line.
No.
When we got to you, you had nothing to say.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Now, go ahead.
When she was speaking, I had a question about the same subject, and yet you, you will not recognize me.
No, 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 listen, you were an hour and a half late for caucus, so just sit there and wait for your turn, okay? Go.
Well, you know what, this is the example that he's setting, okay?
No, it's not, Gloria.
No, I show up on time.
Okay. I, I have a right as a councilperson, if they don't wanna answer it, it's fine, but I'm asking a direct question. Councilwoman Zaverta, did you call Senator Weinberg, yes or no?
Oh my God.
Why not? If you didn't do it, just say you didn't do it.
All right, he's not answering, move on.
Councilwoman Park, did you call Senator Weinberg?
I'm, I'm not answering the question.
All right.
Councilwoman O, did you call Senator Weinberg?
You know what, I think your question is ridiculous, and I'm not answering your question.
Asking elected officials to interfere.
You know what, why don't you call her, ask her yourself, should be grantee.
Council, Councilwoman Park, your turn.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Let's go with the plan of order, discuss about the four cases, uh, two new, uh, home buildings and addition, case under two, further discuss, discuss this month. And one, uh, all the buildings is, uh, renovation approved, and then one case, uh, rejected, uh, because of the, uh, height, height barriers. Uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman O?
Thanks, Mayor.
I know you've had a busy month.
Uh, please, Kelly, we're having, uh, regular meetings with the chief and his team, um, just going through some resident issues, um, following up on a hit and run, uh, that was resolved, found the perpetrator, um, Sixth Street parking. Um, the chief has, uh, already made sure there's no cars behind Sixth Street, which was disturbing some of our residents that were living on Sixth Street. Um, another resident was, um, complaining about basketball courts, uh, next to, um, on Bayview, um, and the fact that there are a lot of residents that weren't from town playing on them, um, and the chief mentioned in the past that it's just something that we can't enforce, um, we can't have, we can't be, um, kicking people from out of town off the courts. So, um, it's something that the mayor and council has looked at before. Um, and the, uh, T-Ball Witty Clinic has gone on successfully. I think you mentioned there was about twenty, twenty-five kids, but I think the main point is we're gonna have regular meetings, um, just like we have with , uh, DPW as well. Um, Mark provided the update earlier, and looking forward to those gates at Witty Field, um, per the mayor's suggestion. That's it.
Thank you, so...
Point of order, Mayor.
No, it's my turn now, hold on. Uh, so I wanna thank the police officers for putting on the Witty Clinic. Um, I, I give praise when praises due, praises deserved there. Um, we were supposed to have a PBA contract negotiation meeting today, the, uh, the PBA couldn't make it, we're rescheduling it. Uh, Johnson Field, we discussed already with the gate, um, and thank you for mentioning that again, Councilman Wu. I wanted to bring I wanted to bring up two more points. The borough is being sued by Chief Chaffey in state court, along with the mayor and some council people, council members. That case was dismissed on summary judgment, this was the case where the chief would not permit us to investigate a certain matter, so we had to give him a leave of absence, paid, of course, for thirty days. The court ruled with me. Next, there's another case pending, and in that case, the PBA sought to get an injunction against the borough, and the injunction was to stop the borough from investigating their alleged misuse of the police patch, the insignia owned by the borough. The injunction was denied. Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, Mayor, one last thing.
Excuse me.
Just on recreation, forgot to mention, we held a tennis clinic the past couple weeks at Witty Field.
Pilot program.
Pilot program, it's been tremendously successful, I think we're generating a lot of, residents are coming out, realizing we have these new courts, they're coming out playing, and I think it'll, it'll continue to grow. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Thanks, I want to thank Ms. Peggy, who's in the audience, who are helping organize that, and also, Ken Leal's been doing a Saturday morning run, which I saw you run by on Saturday, I was on my bike, so otherwise I would have joined you. You guys are moving too fast for me.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, what's your question?
Okay, thank you for recognizing me. I have a question for the borough attorney, Emery. So this consent order that the council president was referring to, it was signed on April twenty-seventh, twenty-ninth?
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't emailed to us until late this afternoon, right? I was reading the consent order, and it said that it had to be given to the council within seven days.
No, you're wrong.
I'm wrong?
Yes, dear, that's attorneys of re, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be disrespectful. Every court order, when you do litigation, you sue court orders, abort it. Every court order has a form to it, the last sentence says, "This shall be served within seven days upon all council of record." It means the lawyers.
Attorneys.
The attorneys.
Okay.
And I apologize for not getting it to you quicker. I said in my email that I sent it to you, that I've been, I've been sent. And as a matter of fact, I've been sending things piecemeal a little bit, and I'm going to try to give you a full report in June.
I would also like to request that you send us those emails that we need to review, like, in advance, like, not two, three hours before the meeting, because some of us, we have a full-time job.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're always running around.
I mean, just so.
The emails about the consent order and.
I know, but, you know, just so you know, I just happened to be cleaning up a pile of things on my desk, and I was like, oh, I was supposed to let the council know. The reason why is that order ends the case, okay? So normally, I don't send every little bit, that ends that case.
Okay, thank you.
And I certainly will try to be, it wasn't related to tonight's meeting, that's.
Kind of requirement, even for the record. Point of. Cut that out to everyone. Point of order, also?
That's a requirement. I have some questions, or a question regarding old business to the mayor, actually. Just the status on the speed bump on Pershing Road, I think the resident was curious.
Yeah, so the new borough administrator is dealing with that, because the former borough administrator was not a fan of speed bumps, as I was told, in very stern words, although, and the police chief as well, so I need to have Mr. Barbario take a look at that and get it resolved. And I know you live on Pershing, so we'll get there.
I'll make sure he has that.
Yeah, well, it's on the list, he's catching up with us.
We did speak about that with the chief, Ellen, he, there were three different options that were proposed with prices, but the chief was definitely not a supporter of that, so definitely would love to revisit that with Mr. Barbario.
Motion to call.
So we received some correspondence of literature, whatever you want to call it, from, Emery referenced it earlier, and I'm not going to speak to that as much as I am my concerns with what I was reading in it. Some of the concerns are that, you know, everyone, no one on this council is better than any other person, right? No one should have more authority on this council, including the mayor, than any one of us. And as I read through some of those emails, it was, really, it really bothered me that all those charges, all that cost incurred, all that time and effort, was all brought up without any of the council members' knowledge. And that really bothered me. You know, there's a book that maybe we should all try and read, it's called Animal Form, and it's all about, basically about communism, but how about no one is better than anyone else. I think we have a problem here. By reading that, it really perturbed me, and I'm going to, and the council could agree, disagree, I really.
You made a misstatement, though, because I do have more authority than you.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not a dictatorship, and that's the problem. And I disagree. I read everything in those transcripts, or whatever you want to call them, what the legal term is, I don't do legal. And there's a problem. The problem I have is there's a law, and then there's a spirit of the law. And I dislike people who hide behind the legality as opposed to the spirit. I'm not saying that to you, Mayor, I'm just saying in general. So.
Well, that's why they tried to go viral.
And listen, just hold on a second.
I don't agree, no, I'm going to speak, Emery.
All right, but.
No, no, I'm not speaking about anyone or anything in particular. There's no right notice.
There's no right notice.
I'm not speaking about anyone.
You are.
I'm not.
You are.
And I respectfully counsel.
Does the mayor need to be righted?
No, no.
Say that, let me speak about it.
So here's the thing.
Well, that's not really funny, but the person.
I'm not trying to be.
The performance should have been righted, if you want to talk about it.
I'm not talking about.
We're not talking about his performance.
I'm talking about the record of this mayor and council.
So why is it, why is it okay when you talk about him, and it's not okay when we talk about it?
Directly or indirectly.
It's about the way things are handled in general, and it's wrong. It's wrong. We're not, we're, I want to be, I want to know what's going on.
The book you should read is the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, both through the South African apartheid.
Yeah, okay.
That's the book you should read, and actually, I mentioned that to you today, that we should actually sit down.
Yes, I agree.
And get that side of the room, and that side of the room, to put away the past and go forward.
Well, maybe we can do that.
And maybe we're at a point now where that pimple's about to pop, because, you know what, we've got a lot of great momentum up here right now, and it's going to continue.